We will now start Council Resolution 17-0004R, Quarterly Budget Briefings for the Baltimore City Public School System. Marguerite, did I get that right?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. I was doing it off of memory. All right. Who do we have from the school system with us today?
Hello, Queen Chair Costello. It's Alison Perkins-Cohen, Chief of Staff, and I have with me here today Chris Doherty, who's our Chief Financial Officer, as well as our Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Mary Ann Cox. Dr. Santelisa had wanted to be here today, but she was going to be here, but at 3 o'clock she had to leave, which she just left to go to the Council of Great City Schools is having an awards ceremony right now for the Green Garner Award, for which she is a finalist. It's the nation's highest award honoring urban educators that have made a contribution into education in cities across the United States. So she's one of seven finalists, and so she had to be there right now. So that's where she is. But I'm very happy to be here with you today to talk about where we are at our end-of-the-year closeout. I'm going to turn it over in a second.
Alison, real quick, we certainly understand her not being here. That's an incredible honor, and hopefully she wins. What do we feel like her chances are? How do we feel?
I mean, I feel like they're great because I think she's the best superintendent in the country. I don't have any inside information for you, other than to say that, what I know to be true, which is that she is the best superintendent in the country. But I think she has a good chance. She really does get a lot of national recognition for the incredible work that she's doing. But I don't know. So we will see. It's an illustrious group. There's a lot of great work going on in urban education, and we're very appreciative right now to be members of that group because there's a lot of learning that's happening right now between school districts within the state, as well as across the country. That's really helping us deal with this unusual situation.
Please keep us updated.
Yes, I've told her to keep me updated because I can't be there because I'm here. So I've told her to text me, so I will keep you updated. So yeah, and I'm happy to be here to talk about all we're doing in terms of the closeout for this year for city schools. We, like your Budget Director Bob Seneme was just talking about, have been working really hard since schools closed March 13th to try to figure out how to really look at our resources and make sure that we were prioritizing the most important investments in students. We know that in this moment, we need to make sure that students have access to devices. And so we have purchased 55,000 devices to make sure that students have access to those. We have another about 13,000 devices that we've reused that are in schools. So we did a kind of an overview of all the devices in our schools, checked them, matched them with cords, because the way that devices are distributed in schools usually are used in schools are parts of carts where they don't always have cords. But we purchased cords and paired them with those, so that we have a total of about 68,000 devices that are available for students and would meet the needs of the traditional school students. Charter schools also got a share of the city council funds, which we are very appreciative for, the $3 million that helped us pay for those devices. Charter's got a share of that, as well as the technology funds from ESTER and that we got through the state and the ESTER grants, and so are using those to help make sure they meet the needs of their students. In addition, we had to make sure that we have access to Internet for Students. So originally, we bought 15,000 hotspots, and now through this arrangement with T-Mobile, we have another 11,000 hotspots that we're getting to provide access to Internet for Students. And then we also have an arrangement with Comcast where we're continuing the payments for Internet Essentials for students who need help making sure that connectivity continues for them. So those were major investments, of course, like you all too. We also have investments for PPE and for cleaning buildings and some of the pieces we have in place in our buildings to keep themselves safe, like air filters and air purifiers and Plexiglas shields for desks. So if you go into our Student Learning Centers now, which we have 15 of those in place where people can go and students can go to access their virtual learning. Those are in place, and we prioritized students who are homeless. And so the majority of students in those Student Learning Centers are homeless, as well as students whose parents' work requires them to be outside of their home. So you know, many of city workers are in those centers, as well as our staff who have to be outside of their home or just any members of the public who have work that requires them to work in person. Wreckin Parks has been our partner on those Student Learning Centers, and I think we've invited the council and others to come see those sites. So we have some tours coming up if folks want to go see them. But those are off-the-ground and are really great. And we're hearing great things from parents about how vital they are to making sure that they're able to have a safe place for their student-to-access learning. We also have some in-person learning happening for special ed students and for English language learners, and we're going to be expanding that to also reach early learning students. So to meet all those needs, to provide good quality virtual learning, to increasingly provide some in-person learning for students who we know are just not meeting their needs virtually, we have really been very careful since March to make sure that we are reducing costs that are not as much a priority anymore, to be able to spend on the things that we know to be priorities in this minute. And so you'll see at our end-of-the-year closeout that really intentional attempt to both meet the immediate needs of COVID as well as plan for the long term, because we know that FY '22 is shaping up to be probably a particularly challenging year. So Chris will go into more of the specifics. I'll turn it over to him. But again, thanks for having us, and we look forward to sharing the specifics of where we are.
Thank you very much, Chief Perkins-Cohen. Can I ask you, Alison, if you can hear me? Because I've been having a wide range of technical issues. Thank you very much. Also, I might be pushing my luck, but with our CEO in the running for that amazing award, it reminded me that in case the council didn't know, in recent days, we had another Teacher of the Year who was named for Baltimore City. So perhaps that's well-known, but it's worth repeating that Wyatt O'Rourke--
Maryland Teacher of the Year.
Forgive me, what did I say?
You just said Teacher of the Year for Baltimore City, but Maryland.
Mr. Wyatt O'Rourke was the Maryland Teacher of the Year. Thank you. City Springs Middle School Teacher, and it's just fantastic news. It's an extraordinary honor. And wonderfully, it's the third time in six years that a teacher from Baltimore City Public Schools has been named the Maryland Teacher of the Year. So on that positive note, I just thought I would share that. And I will start sharing in a moment and see if that works. But I will also say that Chief Perkins-Cohen's overview was excellent. And also, when Mr. Seneme was giving his remarks, I was nodding my head vigorously. Much of the same sets of activities were happening with the school system, trying to utilize every penny of the CARES Act, applying for every bit of reimbursement under FEMA, juggling things like where does hazard pay end and a bonus begin, and stipends, and trying to figure out all of those things on the fly to make sure we do right with all those funds. So it was a very familiar overview and one that I'm going to get into more detail because FY '20 closeout, the entire fourth quarter and a little bit besides were in the COVID environment. So more than half of March and then all of April, May, and June was a COVID environment. So it certainly bears repeating that as we talk about FY '20 closeout and where we are in FY '21 and beyond, like previous discussions, it's going to be unavoidably COVID-heavy. So if I am sharing--
Yes, it looks like, yes.
So just confirming that you're seeing what I'm seeing. This is our cover slide. What we're hoping to do, and we'll try to be very efficient with your time, but we will continue with our introductory comments. We will move there to closing the gap because I know I'm not surprising anyone when we say that the minimum and unavoidable costs associated with managing COVID have far outstripped the additional revenues we've had. And so we've been managing that from the very beginning. And from there, we'll go into more specific discussion of our FY '20 general fund, revenues, expenditures, and uses. And as I said, COVID and how we are dealing with it is threaded throughout all of these slides. So first, some relevant numbers. In early August, after-- we had been doing it from the beginning, but in early August, we put together an assessment where we took all of our absolutely necessary COVID costs from the beginning, and they totaled at least $131 million. And what we're finding is, the reason we say at least is because, as you're experiencing no doubt in other facets of city government, if anything, your estimates, they only go higher. It's rare that we have estimated X and found out that the true costs have been less than X. They've almost always been X or more. So with our COVID additional costs of $131 million, Mr. Seneme mentioned that the city got $103 million in CARES Act funding, every bit of it needed. We got $77 million. It's driven by formula, as I think we all know, and we very much appreciated the $77 million. We also got, again, thank you directly to this body, for $3 million vital dollars from the Children and Youth Fund, which went immediately towards technology. In the early days, March, April, May, one of the biggest category of costs that made up that $131 million stackup were devices. We found out even more of what we knew, which was there's a chasm, a digital divide, that is really gigantic. And when we immediately had to go to the delivery of distance learning, virtual education, we saw and realized that so many of our families and students did not have devices that are able to do meaningful virtual instruction or distance learning. So we put $40 million toward just that, getting devices in the hands of children who need them. And as soon as you have devices, the next thing you need is connectivity. And we became a little bit better-versed, as finance people, I mean, not as IT people, on hotspots and mesh networks and other things like that, all of which cost money. And so we had $7 million towards connectivity that we put in nearly immediately. And what you see, though, is that even with the extraordinarily appreciated $77 million from CARES and from the city of Baltimore, we're nowhere close to the $131 million in COVID costs. So what did we do? From the beginning in March, we tried wherever possible to repurpose funds, to move in allowable ways funds from one category to another, and the old-fashioned way of just trying to save money wherever we can. Back in the spring and summer, we estimated that we ought to have approximately $20 million in FY '20 closeout funds to apply to COVID costs. And when we did our projections, we found that we were expecting to see a $21 million gap. That is the gap referred to in the table of contents because our FY '21 budget did not have a single penny in it for COVID-related costs. And that wasn't an oversight. It was a function of a very elaborate and public and multi-step budget development and approval process. And the FY '21 budget was approved in May, at the beginning of May. And while we had started experiencing COVID, it was essentially past the time where we could put anything into our FY '21 budget. So like in so many other places across the state and the city and country, we entered FY '21 where COVID was the story of the year, and we didn't have a single penny in COVID costs in our budget. So, oh, let's see, my slide's not advancing. Chief Perkins-Cohen, is yours?
It's still on the introduction.
Oh, here we go. So when we closed out our books, our fiscal year, of course, ends 6/30/20. We have three months. It's a truncated period of time, but we're able to officially close in three months. When we closed our books formally in FY '20, which we did on 9/30 per COMAR, we were actually able to apply $26 million towards COVID costs, which brings our remaining estimated COVID gap down to approximately $11 million. So we had internally estimated $20 million, plus or minus 20%, which could get us to $24 million. It turns out, we had $26 million after taking care of other aspects to apply towards COVID, which was good news. Which was good in the sense that it was a bit more than we projected. And like our CEO said at a school board meeting the other night and at other places, there are certain things that are absolutely essential to have as we continue to educate children and as we contemplate even larger numbers of children coming back to in-person learning. And without belaboring it, I think the most essential is to have clean, safe buildings for children and staff and to have ample amounts of PPE and also to continue to have enough devices and enough high-quality connectivity to meet the needs of our children. Because even as we talk about bringing children back for in-person learning, we know that a significant number of families and children are going to stay in the virtual learning environment because that's their decision. That is their decision to make. People's comfortability levels vary. And so one family might choose to come back at point X, and another family right next door will choose to stay virtual. What I mean by pointing that out is, from a finance perspective, we had to have funds and have to maintain funds that allow us to do all of those things at the same time, continue with the much more robust virtual learning opportunities that we're experiencing this fall than frankly, we did at the very beginning of the spring when it first hit, as well as being prepared for as many folks eventually who do come back. So just to put some real numbers to these categories. For the clean, safe buildings, we created a signed fund balance category for building safety enhancements and increased cleaning, and we put $9 million towards that. There's nothing more important than having safe buildings and having people know that when they come back, these buildings are safe. One subset of the $9 million comes in air filters. Prior to putting these funds into the FY '21 budget, there were no line items for MERV 13 air filters. There were no line items for standalone air filtration systems. Sure, there was normal day air filter kind of things, but that was just standard stuff. All of this is above and beyond what was originally forecast. Similarly, with things like masks. And I won't spend too much time because I feel like this council is extremely well-versed in all these. This is just a view of some of the same things, but from the school perspective. For starters, we've said with PPE, one part of PPE are the masks. And we've said, okay, for starters, we're going to give each student three masks, three cloth masks, and each employee two cloth masks. And that's over a quarter million masks right there. And anyone who's been wearing masks recently knows, you forget them. You lose them. We have to have enough masks for every child, every student, every day, irrespective of how forgetful he, she, or we might be. It's just not an option not to have enough masks. It's not an option not to have enough hand sanitizer, the hand sanitizer stands, the soap, everything. These are what we call the non-negotiables, the must-haves. And as I said, none of it had been originally in the FY '21 budget. Similarly, that's in addition to continuing to provide, let's face it, the very expensive virtual learning and distance learning for our kids. So all of that has led us to make these decisions. Also-- So Chief Perkins-Cohen mentioned it, so I will not spend too much time on it. But frankly, from the beginning, March 12th, when schools went virtual, we have had a healthy awareness of just how expensive keeping buildings and children safe and delivering distance learning is. So we put in a spending freeze in the spring. We also, like Mr. Seneme mentioned, we instituted a hiring freeze, not generally popular decisions. We also did case-by-case reduction in third-party contractor costs because there were a lot of things that were contracted to happen that either didn't happen or happened in a different way. And we needed to go through all those contracts and determine the ones we could kind of put in abeyance and the ones where we could dramatically reduce them. And we did all that. Another example is transportation costs. The fact of the matter is, kids weren't being transported to school buildings anymore. So we looked at all of our transportation contracts with an eye towards saving as much money as possible. But also, getting back to the CARES Act, in accepting certain CARES Act funding, we have to, to the extent practicable, keep people employed and keep money flowing. That was kind of the overarching idea of the CARES Act funding. So we had to strike a balance between renegotiating contracts wherever possible and also making sure that we kept people employed to the extent practicable. And with transportation contracts, for example, what we didn't want to do is sever all ties immediately and save a little bit more money and then not have those hard-working, value-adding folks available when we did need them to bring children back, whenever that may happen. That was FY '20. So we started from Jump Street, implementing some of those measures. In FY '21, we did that and some more. Again, driven by our knowledge of just how expensive all of these activities are and the fact that we had no per se budget for it. So we made the decision to discontinue the use of temporary employees effective October 2nd. That was not an easy decision, but it was one that needed to be made in the context of finishing FY '21 balanced. Because also, as Mr. Seneme said, we don't have the luxury to finish a year out of balance. That's per law. So we've also, in addition to not continuing temporary workers, we've also continued to repurpose grant funds wherever possible. And we've also implemented another hiring freeze. So we started one in the spring. We relaxed the hiring freeze in the summer because we needed to make sure that we had sufficient numbers of teachers to deal with the very high demands of virtual learning and the X factor of how and when we return to in-person learning. All of those scenarios involve necessarily a good number of teachers. But we're back now to having a hiring freeze. And as difficult as those decisions have been, they have yielded fruit, and we feel better about how we're going to end FY '21. Now, the summary of the summary is that right now, we feel we are meeting the most immediate challenges. We feel that because of the funds that we've identified and put forward in FY '21 fund balance, we have a fair amount of dry powder to deal with those things that a year ago, we didn't know what those acronyms stood for, you know, COVID, PPE, and other things. We feel we have good dry powder. At the same time, we're looking at an FY '22 right around the corner that is going to be extraordinarily challenging and is going to be extraordinarily challenging for different but compounding reasons. Yes, COVID will still be a factor as far as expenses go, as far as things that we will need to do. At the same time, right now FY '22 does not contain any Kerwin funding. It doesn't contain any bridge to Kerwin funding, the kind of Kerwin Lite that was implemented in order to help us get to move and graduate up to the Kerwin level of funding. So that is a triple whammy, if there ever was one, which is to say, continued COVID realities and costs, no Kerwin, no bridge to Kerwin. And finally, the effective enrollment adjustments on our funding. We all know that the single most important aspect of our funding is the number of children we're educating in a particular year. And we arrive at that number in the fall of the preceding year. So right now, as we did enrollment counts in this very different environment, that's going to lead to FY '22 funding. And although the final numbers aren't in, the numbers are going to be lower than what we projected for various reasons of folks choosing not to send kindergarteners to school just yet or doing other things. The count that we will use for FY '22 will, in any case, be lower than what was projected. So it was with that healthy concern about FY '21, closing the gap, FY '22, preparing to the extent possible for what will be a very difficult year, that was all part of our context when we closed out FY '20. One thing I will say as I go to this next slide, and I can say it without it being self-serving because I'm new to the system. For the 11th straight year, city schools received a clean audit. Our external auditors do a very, very thorough audit of all of our financial statements. And for 11 years running, they have been entirely clean, unmodified audits. That is to say, no findings of any kind. And that's remarkable, and I want to point that out because it's been under the leadership of Chief Perkins-Cohen and Deputy Chief Financial Officer Mary Ann Cox. So these numbers are the FY '20 numbers. And this is first the revenue slide. And as one would expect, there's not a lot of difference between budgeted funding and actual funding. The city of Baltimore came in to the penny, as you always do. And there were a few other ups and downs, but the net effect of that was $5 million more out of $1.17 billion that was budgeted from the revenue side. Now, from the-- Hopefully, you're seeing the screen that I'm seeing now. From the expenditure side, this is one where we have more control over it. They're big categories, but we had more than one quarter of FY '20 was held in a COVID environment. And we implemented the measures that I summarized very briefly a few moments ago. So we did see positive variances in some of the major categories, salary and wages, and of course, fringe just pretty much comes in lockstep with salary and wages for the most part. Contractual services, through our efforts, we were able to come up with almost $16 million in budgeted contractual services that we were not obligated to pay, that we didn't need to pay. We didn't pay. Materials and supplies, you see it as well. And utilities and other charges, that's $9.7 million. Part of that, of course, is that on balance, it's less expensive to run empty buildings with no children than it is-- It's a small upside from a financial point of view, but wherever possible, we did just that, which was enact savings and repurposing. And that led to $73 million variance on the expenditure side. So when we combine those two numbers, the $5 million and the $73 million, and then we put it in one slide, we see the kinds of funds that we have-- We get closer to the funds that we had available to apply to COVID. So after-- Oh, a quick word on some of the top lines. So first, we have to take out the previously board-approved other financing sources that was put in for FY '21 originally. Encumbrances can vary fairly dramatically year to year. That $4.6 million figure is the net sum of a whole lot of other little things-- Or I shouldn't say little things, individual things-- where you have commitments that were made in FY '20 that carry over into FY '21, and it's essentially already spoken for money. The $11.2 million food service loss bears a bit more explanation. When we closed the schools in March, we made the determination to continue to provide as many meal sites as we could. In addition to providing meals for children, we provided meals to adults and to the community. We went from about 100,000 meals a day to 10, 11, 12, 13,000 meals a day. And we maintained our-- And we maintained our staff at the previous levels. As you all know, as decision-makers, if you have a 90% drop in revenues and you maintain all of your costs, you're going to have a significant loss. And we did, to the tune in FY20 of $11.2 million. We have gotten, right now, to mention while we're on food services, we're back to having 83 sites. We have meal service at 83 sites across the city. Our daily food numbers or meal counts are up around 30,000 and climbing as people get more familiar with which schools are meal sites and which are not. We get, the revenue that we get from meals is from the USDA. It goes into our enterprise fund. It's not a general fund category. And this, of course, is a general fund discussion. But anytime that enterprise fund has a loss, it relies on the general fund to make up for that loss. So that's why you're seeing an entry for food services, which is governed by enterprise funds in the general fund summary. And then with the remaining funds, you'll see the theme jumps right off the page, and that's COVID. We applied all the money that we could to the COVID costs that we had not budgeted for but that we had been dealing with for several months. That is the building prep fund of $9 million, the PPE, where I talked about masks, but it's barriers, it's signage, and a lot of those are, they need to be replenished on an ongoing basis. And it's the technology for another $9 million. We also allocated $19.5 million to food services in FY21. We want to get our meal counts up as high as we can because every meal served is a meal eaten and enjoyed. And that's what our food service folks do. With 83 sites open now, our numbers are not going to be, they're not going to get back to the 90,000 to 100,000 level. So no matter the timing of the return to in-person learning, we're going to have a loss in FY21 in food services. We don't know how great it will be. We will work very hard to make it as small as possible. But I think it's entirely unavoidable that there will be a loss and we have to be prepared for that. And the final item is actually the only non-COVID item in that list. And that is a little over $2.5 million as we continue to transition from our current enterprise resource planning system to a new one. We have approximately a two-decade-old Oracle system that we're transitioning away from, which is a very large and multi-year process. And we put aside a little over $2.5 million for that purpose as well. And I suppose it isn't directly COVID-related, but it certainly will help us deal with the additional accounting, reporting requirements and tracking requirements that the federal funds and everything else require. I think, I'm not sure if there's another slide after this or not. And, oh, no, I guess that's, I hope I didn't go on too long, but I wanted to give as much context as I think the numbers at a minimum required.
Chris, thank you. Chris or Marguerite, could you please take down the presentation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any questions for city schools?
No questions from me.
Councilwoman McCray?
No question, Mrs. Shearer, thank you.
Council Vice President Middleton?
No questions.
Chris, is this your first time testifying in front of the council?
Yes, it is. My first time.
Apparently, you did good because no one has any.
I like that you guys have given it to him easy the first time. That's nice of you. I appreciate it.
Beginner's luck.
Don't expect it the next time. Don't expect it the next time.
I like you letting him phase in. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, Chris, Allison, I'd like to have city schools come back when we have BBMR back, just to do a presentation that really just focuses on COVID. We can talk sometime next week. I'm thinking sometime in the latter half of November.
Sure.
To get an update on COVID-specific things. I know you covered a lot of them. So it may just be a regurgitation of some of those materials, but I think that'd be useful for the council. Colleagues, if there's no other questions, city schools, thank you very much. Best of luck to Dr. Santa Lisa's.
I'm going to jump over to that. Thank you guys so much. It was good to see everybody.
We're now in recess.